You're good.
All right, I'm calling this meeting to order Monday, March 18th. Select Board Meeting, call to order. First, I would like to welcome our recently elected Select Board Member, Dan Muncher. Welcome back. Welcome back. Roll call attendance.
Hartik here.
Gibson here.
Kapiello here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first item of business is Select Board Reorganization. So every year, the Select Board votes among themselves for Chair and Vice Chair. So I am not throwing my hat in the ring for Chair at this point. So I would like to nominate Mr. Kapiello as Chair, who's been our Vice Chair.
I would second that.
Are you willing to serve?
I am willing to serve.
Okay, so we should do a roll call vote for that.
For Chairperson.
As Chair.
Enthusiastically, Hartik, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Kapiello, aye. So you are the new Chair. Let's just go through Vice Chair and then we can. So we need a Vice Chair.
I have no interest in that. I was hoping, Mr. Gibson, I have not seen you in a leadership role with the Board, and I was hoping you might consider taking that on.
I would second that, yes.
All right, so let's do a roll call on that.
Hartik, aye.
Kapiello, aye.
Okay, Kapiello, aye. So we have a new Chair and Vice Chair. So if you would like to move to this position, you are welcome.
Make sure you take your pack with you.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you both for serving.
It was a pleasure.
You're gonna sit down here?
Yeah, I'll just sit here.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to serve this year.
Thank you very much.
We work, not sure people realize it, so thank you both.
And just recognizing that the two of you do work full-time and the rest of us are not working full-time, if there's any way we can help you.
Okay.
Please let us know.
Very good.
I have grandkids 53 hours a week. I'm working more than full-time, but go ahead.
I won't speak for Tracy.
But I'm not.
I'll only speak for myself.
Has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes, yes.
Two proposed changes before a motion, if you don't mind. Representative Howard, Heath Howard, reached out and he's here tonight. And so I'd propose adding Representative Howard as invited guest C, so six C. And then the only other proposed change was adding an appropriation from the Fire Truck Capital Reserve to the Consent Agenda. We would put that as G for outfitting of the forestry truck.
What was the amount on that?
Less than $20,000. The proposal is to appropriate up to $20,000 from the Fire Truck Capital Reserve.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I'd recommend those two changes if you're interested.
I know we kept the agenda as a map. Six Charlie and. Consent Agenda.
I'd second that.
Roll call.
Hartik, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Muncher, aye.
Kapiello, aye.
Kapiello, aye. And next up on the docket is public comment. Putting room that would make. Please, please go ahead, state your address and your name.
Could you press that button as well, so you record?
No, just press it. It should turn green, thank you.
My name's Jeff Toreg. I'm from R&amp;D Paving, I'm a sales representative. I do not live in town. I just wanted to take the opportunity to come to the meeting, introduce myself, and do have an upcoming paving bid that just came out. And our brief history in town, well, a little bit extended in the past. We had the paving contract for a number of years in town, always had great success. Everything was very good. The last few years was going to another vendor, which is absolutely fine. Obviously, competition's great. Our concern is, I think, is it two of the last, I believe, four years, we were low bidder. And we just want to make sure, before we put the time and the effort in, from a sales point of view, it does cost money for us to come out and do all the stuff and put the actual bid together. And I just want to make sure, if we do, if we are going to take the time to put a good competitive bid in, that we will get the, I guess, the looking over of the bid to get a fair shot at getting it and being awarded the bid. That's our, I guess I would say, our biggest concern. And I just wanted to know from the Board, just to make sure that we're going to have a good, honest, fair shot at getting the bid, considering that the confusion on our end is that every single year, we're solicited from the town to make a bid. We're literally emailed the bid from the town, saying, hey, will you bid on our work? So if that's the case, give a good competitive bid that is a low number, we would expect to get the bid. So that's.
We take all bids into consideration, and, you know, we'll look at them when we get them.
Okay. So we would have a fair shot at getting it, then? I mean, we're just assuming that we're on a, I'm not going to say a preferred, but a vendor list that would be approved by the town if we're getting it from the town. That's our concern.
So I can't guarantee anything until we have them all, and we look at them, and, you know, we talk with our highway department, and we go back and forth, and we see the bids, and we'll make the best choice, and best of luck.
All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Anybody online for public comment? Star six, if you're on the phone, or you can raise your hand, wait to be recognized by the Chair. I don't see any, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Public comment. And public hearings, an invited guest, is anybody from the School Board?
Who's that back there?
Keith.
Okay, on to community power aggregation and implementation.
So we have Chair of the Energy Committee, Paul Panish, joined by Andrew Hatch from the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire.
Welcome back.
Mr. Chairperson, can I make a quick statement? Congratulations to the Energy Committee. I'm understanding that the warrant article passed on the community power at the highest percentage of any of the articles.
Oh, was it? That I didn't know. I knew that it passed with a good percentage, and I was very happy about it. But I didn't realize that we had that distinction, which is nice to know.
There you have it.
So, as I mentioned earlier to some of you, I'm not going to present the presentation that you have in the packet that Connor gave out. I tried to simplify things and shorten things. I'm not at all sure that I succeeded. So this is, this is a complicated issue. And for that reason, this was submitted to legal counsel. And my assumption is that it has been reviewed and approved by legal counsel.
Right. I mean, approved, so, you know, they, they pointed out concerns that they have, but they have reviewed the documents in other communities as well and recognized that it's not going to change. It's, the calculus for the Select Board is the risk tolerance of delegating authority to the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. And, you know, I think those were parts of the conversation early on with the Energy Committee, when the Energy Committee first proposed joining the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and allowing the Energy Committee to review their operations, their details. And so, you know, any attorney is going to point out when, hey, look, you're delegating authority. Are you sure you want to delegate this authority because you no longer have that authority? And some of it were things like the ability of the Community Power Coalition as a whole to change some of the terms of the agreements with a supermajority of their decision-making. And so there is risk in joining the group and delegating the authority. But I don't think it's any surprising risk that the Select Board hasn't previously been presented by, from the Energy Committee or Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. It's just that, that risk calculus that, for joining the organization. And so, approved, I mean, they've, yeah, they haven't, they haven't said, hey, strongly advise that you don't do this, but just pointed out the nuances of the agreement.
Yeah, and there are a lot. I mean, these are very detailed documents, they're legal agreements, and they're, we, I'm sure that we don't want to go into all the fine detail. But we will go into anything that you have questions about, and I will probably draw heavily on Andrew, if you get deep into any of these issues. From our perspective, what I'm hoping to do is, I have these items for Select Board approval that I'm hoping will be done by the end of this evening. There is a deadline on getting this approved to the Coalition. And Andrew, what is the date for that?
Good evening, everybody, and good to be back. And thank you for mentioning the success in Barrington. It was joined by another 23 communities during last week. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us. And what Paul's referencing there is that the next window of opportunity to launch is in June. But I want to stress that the article that was approved is obviously authorizing this Board to act at its discretion. And it's not, you know, a heavy, hard date that, you know, it's a speak or forever hold your peace. In fact, we are doing something that hasn't been done before. The folks that have just launched in March of this year, that's right, this month, approved a year ago. So that was the kind of timeline that was being considered by last year's graduates. But we've put a lot of effort into making this process as simple as possible for communities and giving the communities who are most anxious to get launched, the opportunity to expedite the process. So there's several very well-organized communities, Barrington included, who have been maintaining a close eye on this schedule. And in fact, the last day of March is really the latest that we could get an executed cost-sharing agreement in hand and then actioned all of the procurement requirements to launch in June. But the next one is already being talked about in September.
Things are accelerating.
So move forward tonight to launch in June, or possibly the next round, which may be in September.
So in order to launch, what, what we do need to do, as Andrew mentioned, is adopt the cost-sharing agreement, and included in that is a member services agreement. That does require signatures. We also need to adopt some related policies, which are referenced in there, and those regard retail rates, financial reserves, portfolio, risk management, data, security, and privacy. The other task that needs to be done by the Board, and I have a question for Andrew on this, is that you, you may authorize an authorized officer and delegate specific tasks to that officer. Now, the Board can retain all of those rights to themselves, so you don't have to have an authorized officer. But you're sort of on the hook for making live decisions and, not really in real time, but whenever a meeting may be called of the Risk Management. Committee, the Risk Management Committee, which will be needed to authorize the launch in particular.
Good question.
Do you have a position description for that authorized officer?
Because it's not really a burdensome thing, what we say in, in our information is just that the roles that are responsible just are a point of contact who's authorized by the Board of Selectmen to act on behalf of the town. And as Paul was alluding to, there's really three options that we offer a choice on in the agreement.
Page 21, if you want to follow along. Sorry to interrupt, Andrew.
Sure, no, absolutely. And I would comment that some of this, you know, has been developed in order to have an abundance of caution, to be very, to look at towns of all different sizes, you know, and so therefore, a larger city might have a greater sort of motivation to have a single person that's separate from the Board of Selectmen than a smaller town. But there's really, typically what we see is the authorized officer is the one responsibility they typically always have, is the option to be the representative, to delay commencement of procurement. That's, that's the one day where it really matters, because we will be coming, I think, in early April, had a Risk Management meeting where the decision to go or not go forward, and it's by default. So if somebody does not speak on behalf of the Town of Barrington, and you will be enrolled, and then we will start procuring power on your behalf. The person doesn't have to be in person, but they would have to attend the meeting remotely or in person. If you were to decide to delay procurement, and again, it's an unlikely event, but it's just to make sure that we've got all of that sort of clarity for the Town of Barrington. The other two, the specifying the default and optional products and setting discretionary reserve adders, are conversations that would typically be had in a, in a Select Board meeting. It would be opportunities to consider options that we don't have on the table right now and to, and to look at options for Barrington itself to do some individual things that other communities aren't doing. That's what discretionary reserves are all about. I can get far further in the weeds, but that's just, those are only three responsibilities of the authorized officer. And often in communities, the authorized officer is the same person as the principal executive officer. And the only difference between those two roles is that in our administrative world, we would be sending rate updates and so forth to the, to the principal executive officer and keeping in touch as the Coalition about rates and so forth. And then you have your member representatives that are coming to meetings and getting involved with the Coalition, if that's the way you'd like to move forward. So it's not, it's not a heavy lift by any means. And if you felt comfortable with, you know, putting your town administrator in both of those roles, that's a very common decision.
The first role being the authorized officer, and the second role being?
The principal executive. Present, yeah, it's called the principal executive officer.
On page 22, page 21 and 22 list the, those three, among others, duties or responsibilities. And yeah, so certainly a conversation for the Select Board. It's populated here showing Energy Committee Chair, Paul Panish, but the Select Board can certainly change that. So that's authorized officer on page 21. On page 22, you see the member representative. That was a decision made previously by the Select Board and the alternate, who's the Vice Chair of the Energy Committee. And then principal executive officer of the town is the town administrator. So I guess the two decisions you'd have to make with that one is, what authority do you want to delegate from those three tasks, and who do you want to delegate it to?
Dan, you had a question?
Not on this particular issue, but I did have a question. In the, whatever this top one is, cost-sharing agreement talks in Article 11, ways this agreement shall continue in full force till terminated by the dissolution of the corporation, withdrawal, involuntary termination of member from the corporation, provided in Article four and five, and I couldn't find, couldn't figure out what Article four and five are. What page are you on?
10.
On 10. That was. Either direct page to Article four and five, or can you articulate that?
Article four and five of the Joint Powers Agreement. So your Joint Powers Agreement is the preceding document that the Board adopted to join the Coalition. A lot of what was in there is replicated in here. It was a non-binding agreement. It just gave the town a full idea of how the Coalition is structured. So it does reference the Joint Powers Agreement, the JPAs, we call it a lot in here.
Good. If I don't have the JPA right here, could you tell me what, how we can terminate as a member? I'm not looking forward to that, but.
Termination, there is a very, there's a large body that's devoted to termination, and there is a lot involved there, so we can go through that.
Well, just, I mean.
It is covered a little bit in, certainly in the original slide deck. I'm not sure what you handed out. But basically, if I, if I could sort of position this a little bit, because it can seem somewhat more burdensome than it really is. Firstly, the term cost-sharing agreement. I get a lot of Select Boards that haven't sort of been paying attention to the details a lot. I didn't think there was any cost to the town. What's all this sharing business? And it is nothing to do with burdening the town with any financial obligations. It's how we allocate fairly the costs of each member and not burden the others with costs. It's how we break out those costs and apportion them. So in other areas, we talk about that as how the cost-sharing agreement articulates the difference. As I said earlier about the responsibilities of the authorized officer, there's, there's future opportunities within the Coalition to get involved in local projects and special projects that not all of the members are involved in. So again, anything that's sort of smaller than the whole has to be accounted for in, on a local level. So that's what we mean by cost-sharing. The big thing that we are doing on behalf of the Town of Barrington is procuring power in a contract. And why we are able to be more affordable than the default rate of the utility is the way that we go about in procuring that power. We aren't restricted to buying power just twice a year on a date certain. And consequently, we are purchasing contracts in different lengths and terms. Our agreements and policies in here about rate setting and risk management say that the longest period that we can commit to a contract would be 36 months. So what we say in terms of our exit strategy, if a, if a town or municipality wanted to leave, would be you have to give written notice, and that would trigger a date 36 months in advance. However, there are plenty of early termination options. And so going back to what I was saying about procurement, what we don't want to do is burden another town or another members of the Coalition with the, the cost of carrying those power contracts that we've procured specifically on behalf of the Town of Barrington. I can't tell you, and nor can we at this moment, talk in anything more than general terms, because it's a date in the future, and at that date, we would have to see what the circumstances were. There will only be a small fraction of any power procurement in the Town of Barrington that goes out as long as 36 months. Right here, right now, we're not procuring anything over a year, quite honestly. So this notice period is something that would just trigger a calculation. We would have to look at how we could get Barrington out from underneath its obligations and not burden the other members. That's as simply as I can put it.
That's fine. Just, you know, there was a small portion of the population wasn't enthused about this, whatever, for whatever reason. So I just want to have in my brain, if that number increases at some point, is there, you know, what do we do?
The 36-month number, you mean?
The people who aren't enthused about community power.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if we had a change, change in heart. I don't anticipate that. Just thought that'd be.
It is completely understandable.
So for the sake of protection of the town, its budget, what have you, wouldn't the authorized officer most often be the town administrator, and then you would have the member representative likely be Mr. Panish?
That's what he was saying.
Yeah.
So that's what we're deciding tonight.
If you'd like to, yes.
And then the other portion of this, I think that becomes important, is as a Select Board at this point, with hearing from the town residents, where 68.4% returned a yes, jump into this, please. I think we should be reading through the material, but be ready to respond. And it sounds to me like we don't have another meeting before the April 1st deadline. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on here on a vote for that schedule. And I think what you heard from Mr. Hatch, Mr. Panish, is that you don't have to, we don't have to launch in June, but if you're happy with everything and the residents have approved it, we can proceed on that schedule.
But Tracy, one thing I wanted to make clear is that there's no cost burden on the town as a result of executing this agreement. What you're doing is, you're authorizing at launch that power purchases can be made. So money is being expended, and money is coming in from rate payers, you know, to pay, to cover those costs. If the town did decide to terminate at some point in the near future, or the intermediate future, what have you, those need to be unwound. Those agreements can be resold, but it takes time. And the, the expenses that have been incurred by the Coalition would be recovered through the rates that are charged to the customers at that point. So there's, there still is no cost to the town.
That's exactly true. And again, we would just be motivated to assist any exiting community to get out from under those obligations as fast as possible. But in any case, there will be no financial liability to the Town of Barrington. That's the cornerstone of our coalition.
Can you explain what an early termination request entails?
Well, it.
Is the Board interested in?
This is just Article four and five from the Joint Powers Agreement.
Interested. So our attorney has reviewed both.
Yes.
Documents in full.
Yes, correct.
My, my motion would then be to, like you need more work or something else added to your executive responsibilities, would, would be to place Connor MacGyver into the position of the authorized officer.
So if you're, I don't know that you're ready to vote on everything, but there's a motion drafted on page two of the Town Administrator Report. And you would just have to substitute Paul Panish, Energy Committee Chair, with Connor MacGyver, Town Administrator. And that would do the three things that we talked about while we're here tonight, which is, one, to approve the cost-sharing and member services agreement, adopt the policies, and appoint me as the authorized officer with the authority to delay select default and optional products and set discretionary reserve adders. So if you're ready to make that entire motion, you could.
Does the rest of the Select Board feel ready, or do you individually need to review these documents? Because that would push us off to September.
I'm ready to move ahead.
Connor, did you have any, do you have any questions or anything?
No.
So I'd make a motion to enter into the cost-sharing agreement, member services contract for the complete service bundle of Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, otherwise known as CPCNH, with Connor MacGyver, Town Administrator, as the authorized officer, and with elections in Exhibit C, Article, that's seven, Section two, of the agreement, being a yes, B being a yes, and C being a yes, and to approve CPC, New Hampshire's data, security, and privacy, energy, portfolio, risk management, rates, and financial reserve policies.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Hartik, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Muncher, aye.
Kapiello, aye.
Kapiello, aye.
I'm very disappointed that you didn't want to hear the rest of my presentation.
I would also, should the Board be motioning to ensure that the, was it a principal member representation be moved over to Mr. Panish?
That was already done. The member services representative.
Fabulous, okay. Thank you for all your hard work.
Okay. Thank you guys.
And I would say that the efficiency is reflective of the amount of work that the Energy Committee has done and already presented to the Select Board. I would put our Select Board up against governing bodies in a lot of other communities in the state with how much they understand what community power aggregation is and how it works. And that isn't because, some of it's because they did the research on their own, but we were very well-advised by the Energy Committee. So credit to you all.
The PowerPoint presentation made it very well-understood, what, what. Thank you.
And we look forward to fighting Barrington to have a very proactive role in the Coalition going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Paul, if you're feeling bad, you can submit your PowerPoint.
Paul, if you're feeling bad, you can submit your PowerPoint. He's a document.
Connor, he can do what he wants.
We'll add it to the PowerPoint that's in the materials already, so. Here's the long version, here's the short version.
Saving money and saving the world. That's really.
Thanks for having us. I'd like to welcome up Heath Howard.
Thank you for having me. Is this good enough for the mic? So my name is Representative Heath Howard. I'm from the town of Stratford. I represent both Stratford, Barrington, and Concord. So the purpose for my attendance here today is actually to make a request to have the town of Barrington join with the, at least the town of Stratford, I'm working on some other municipalities, to form a study committee under RSA 53-G2, which would form a special unpaid committee to study the planning of a communications district. So a couple Thursdays ago, I had a bill on the House floor to form countywide communications districts. It failed by one vote. The Speaker, the House Speaker broke the tie and it failed on the floor. The legislation was targeted at trying to provide additional broadband services to some of our more underserved community members and provide lower rate-cost internet services for people, not just here in Stratford County, but around the state. And part of this is because in our communities, we do have a lot of people who have struggled with getting adequate service. And I had a wonderful conversation with Connor McGyver earlier today about kind of some of the plans about the future of what broadband is going to look like in both of our towns. And, you know, I really do appreciate, you know, you taking the time to educate me a little bit further and more in-depth about what some of the thoughts are about the fiber that's coming into Barrington and potentially into Stratford. But I do have some concerns because we have seen a number of internet service providers come into New Hampshire and other communities where they still have very, very high costs with not necessarily the most adequate speeds. And the kind of ultimate goal for what I see in Stratford County is having a reliable internet service for everybody, no matter what their income level. And part of that is, is we need to figure out and study what parts of our community in a county most need to have this additional service provided to them. And I really do feel that the communications districts are a very underutilized aspect of New Hampshire law. It was passed in 2020 and we've only seen a couple of districts pop up since, and one in, over in Cheshire, the other one up in Carroll County. And they've done a really good job at providing additional service, even in some of these higher-serve areas, but still are able to compete by providing a low-cost alternative. So part of it is in terms of how we go about this process. And that starts with a study committee. And I do believe that trying to form a study committee to see if the, if this should be advised, would be a good step forward, especially because it is required by statute. It does not bind any municipality to joining a district after establishing a study committee. But it would provide the opportunity for other communities in Stratford County to start joining together to look at exactly what we need to do to make sure that our entire county is covered as best as possible. I know that the Stratford County Regional Planning Committee has been willing to provide potential additional information about specific broadband information and kind of exactly what would be the best way to move forward. And I would love to have an opportunity to get a little bit more in-depth with them. But currently, under the statutes, we really can't proceed much further unless something has changed. So with that, I will kind of wrap everything up and I, oh, there was one other thing. I did get your email about HB 1479, which is the anti-lobbying bill for public officials. And I will be voting in opposition like you guys have requested, so thank you for reaching out about that. With that being said, I believe that kind of covers everything that I was going to bring up, and I'll open it up to any questions.
Thanks for coming in, Representative Howard. What's your timeline? Because since we spoke, I learned that we're probably competitive in the grant that we've applied for, and so that might make a huge difference. We might want to see that play out before we look to join a study committee.
So, yeah, with the, with the study committee, part of it is, and why I'm kind of going around and asking, this is not necessarily the most opportune time for me. I have a lot going on in Concord right now. But the problem is in part of what my legislation that I had fail a couple weeks ago was targeted at, was trying to simplify this establishment process so that the counties could handle this because the economies of scale really aren't here for smaller towns. In just smaller towns alone, you have to have a larger group, which is kind of why I'm reaching out to the communities that I represent in Stratford and Barrington and asking them to help start the study committee. Because I have spoken with other representatives from other communities in the area who have said that they would have interest in having their communities join a study committee. So this wouldn't affect anything with, in terms of grants and your ability and capability to obtain them. Or, you know, again, if there is a change in terms of total service in Barrington, you guys can still pull out of the planning committee as well as the district as a whole if you do not feel it's right for Barrington. This is just to kind of look at another option to make sure that we can provide the best service possible.
Any other questions?
So I need to say this as politely as possible. Did you propose something that would have affected our town before you came to the select board to discuss it?
No.
Okay.
So this is something where the countywide communications district would change how communications districts would be formed by basically just kind of outlining it from the county and kind of leaving it at that size because those, the county-sized districts would be competitive with the scale that they would be operating at in terms of sharing of maintenance tools and staff. It would be a lot more efficient because, again, a lot of this is regional-based in how we need to kind of approach these types of things. It would also cut costs for a number of municipalities who may be looking at forming districts. Coos County, I know they've had a number of issues in terms of service. And I know that there have been a couple communities, not necessarily adjacent communities, but ones that are both part of Coos County that have expressed interest in joining communications district, but their neighbors are not necessarily as willing to, to, to join up. So we want to really try and provide as many options for people as possible, as well as, you know, make sure that we can have opt-out options, which was included in my legislation. So if there was something that didn't work for Barrington, there would still be an option for them to leave if so.
Excellent.
So it was not anything that would have mandated Barrington stay within the district.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we just table this until we do more research on RSA 53-G2. I need to be comfortable. Does anyone else have any feelings about?
Yeah, that's, that's.
So there would be an opportunity down the road to join the study group if, if it made sense.
Yeah, that would be exactly correct. And again, this is an unpaid committee, so it wouldn't cost the taxpayers anything. The Stratford County Regional Planning Committee has done quite a bit of research into this topic already, and it would be great to kind of get a few more different communities' perspectives on how this would affect them. So again, I didn't expect you guys to make a decision tonight. This is something where I did reach out kind of later, but it is something where I want to get a number of communities to start thinking about this process so that we can start thinking about potentially forming this committee. So thank you.
Has Stratford or other communities said yes to doing this yet?
So I'm actually going to be speaking with the Stratford Select Board tomorrow. I brought this up at our town meeting on Saturday to kind of have a little bit more of an opportunity to hear public feedback about what we need to do to move forward because Stratford is, if you, if you look at the BEA map provided by UNH, which shows broadband speeds across the state, Stratford is the, it does have the worst service of any community in the county. So we have had a number of people in, in a lot of, in quite heavy support of kind of moving forward with this. So I expect that they are going to be potentially accepting that tomorrow. I don't necessarily know. I have spoken with them briefly, but it is a study committee and I don't necessarily feel like there's a problem with studying things because it's still, it still gives you guys the final say of whether or not to approve anything because it is advisory only.
It just involves, are you looking just at Stratford County or the Seacoast?
So.
Stratford, Rockland.
Yeah, it's, it's a bit of both. It depends on what communities would be interested in joining up. Because again, these districts are not necessarily locked to counties. Counties just made the most sense for what we were trying to approach in terms of just getting an easy economy of scale that would be easy to operate. It doesn't necessarily require that those communities stay within those county borders, but I do think that having the Seacoast join together in a district would be quite worthwhile.
Tracy?
Could you possibly send us the language from RSA 53-G2 as well as the Stratford County Regional Planning documentation on broadband that you've discussed and maybe a link to the map from UNH?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that would put us in a much better situation to understand what Barringtonites might be experiencing and then look at the broader picture.
Yeah. That would be acceptable, yes.
Thank you.
And I have a question for our town administrator. Do we have a sense of when the grants might be?
Yeah, so you're talking about the broadband matching grant initiative that was put out by the state, and we expect those results soon. Anybody that is looking to follow what Barrington has done as far as bringing fiber to the premise can go to barringtonnh.gov/fiber. I would say Barrington has been leading the charge as far as getting out in front of tracking down initiatives to bring fiber to the premise. Credit to the Technology Committee who had this on their radar two years ago when we started the process. And so hopefully, we'll have news to share soon on that. One of the big challenges that we experienced when we went through the process two years ago was we advertised an RFP for bringing fiber to all residents in Barrington. We don't have enough unserved or underserved addresses to allow bonding, which is really what, unless you're going to go an all-public model, which is where the town or the county would be the internet service provider, the public-private partnership, what the public brings to the table is low bonding rates. And the state, the enabling legislation by the state, and Representative Howard was referencing that, you know, unless something changes with that legislation, the current legislation doesn't allow a municipality to go into debt to build out fiber infrastructure unless they are an appropriate level of unserved or underserved. And we don't meet that threshold. So we couldn't, even if 100% of residents in the town of Barrington voted and said we want to go into $5 million in debt to build fiber infrastructure through the entire town, we can't because we're, and I'm not saying that's a good idea, but, so that's where this grant program was a good compromise. And we have a willing private sector participant that says we want to bring this to town. And so hopefully, we'll have some information on that soon.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scotty.
And also, congratulations, Mr. Minasrek, on your win on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks.
Representative Howard told me the legislation around signage was defeated in committee.
Okay.
So it went about 60 days or a filing period.
I will say, I will be working on other legislation. I can go back up to the mic if you'd like. I will be back that legislation. I do think that there is some merit to it because candidates are classified as a different type of, a class of, versus citizens. When you read the legislation, it actually defines them differently in terms of the cleanup requirements for signage. And I do think that there is a merit to having the creation of a window for when postage would be acceptable.
I think the more important thing for our town would be the definition in the language of that that indicates when someone actually becomes a candidate. For instance, in our town, there's only a 10-day window. And the other part to it that I think becomes very important as you're proposing that is that you should not be allowed to advertise any portion of your business in or around that signage.
Yeah.
That would be very important.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback. Thank you. But, yeah, it did fail 19 to 1 in committee because of some issues that the Attorney General had with it. And I do think that we can try and address those. Maybe, I was going to plan on speaking with a couple attorneys to see if we could iron out some of the problems that they had and re-propose that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, of course. Thank you for having me.
Consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the March 18, 2024 Consent Agenda A through G.
Okay. Roll call.
Article 5.
Get tonight.
Kathy, hello, I.
Sakoshai. Still getting used to the change of.
Well, Mr. Chair, you're doing a great job so far.
Haven't screwed it up. We're good.
Okay, that brings us down to appointments. Appointments for terms expiring in 2024. We have the Conservation Commission, Doug Bogan. Any discussion?
He's been on that for a long time.
Right, and he's been chair for, I think, a year.
Current chair, right.
Yep.
I see no problems with his.
Lucky to have amazing volunteers.
Okay, that brings us down to Sea Health Officer, James Genison. Any discussion?
Is this a change from Mr. Huckins?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And John Hutchins.
Yes.
And with his retirement.
Most of the health concerns are physical health as opposed to public health as opposed to.
Right.
But more code related, right?
Right. Exactly.
Okay. With that, if there's no more discussion, that's going to bring us to staff report.
Fantastic. So we have had a meeting in March so far, so I won't read through the list of our work anniversaries, but they're included for your reference. And now we can talk about the election results from less than a week ago. So as we all know, a few things of interest happened on Tuesday. Voters showed up and approved the library proposal, the operating budget, the town center tax increment financing district, community power we talked about earlier. So we had 44 Warren articles on the town ballot that voters voted on, and they defeated two. One was the public safety building design engineering, and the second was the citizen petition for a joint advisory budget committee. We'll talk more about the public safety building in a second. All 19 zoning amendments passed, which is unheard of. I mean, the unfortunate reality about land use rules is that they're complicated. And when people don't understand something, they either don't vote or they vote no, which is perfectly reasonable if you understand something. I think the fact that we had so much support and approval of the zoning ordinances is very reflective of the work the planning board and staff put into helping people understand what they were deciding. is very reflective of the work the Planning Board and staff put into helping people understand what they were deciding. And I think that those, those proposals were reflective of what the community wanted to see. So, moving on, the, the, maybe the headline of Tuesday was the turnout. Over 40% of registered voters showed up to vote. That is the single biggest voter turnout since Barrington went to SB2 in 1997.
And certainly bigger than many of the communities around.
Oh, I haven't seen a community with SB2 that has had higher, a 40% voter turnout. And I can't say confidently that there hasn't been one because I haven't looked at all, but it's unheard of. You know, you see communities with 10, 15, 20 maybe percent voter turnout. So that is the headline. You know, I wish, and I've talked to a lot of people about this, I wish that we could confidently point at the reason, or likely the reasons, that most contributed to that because we need to bottle that up and do it every single year to motivate the people to come out. Truth be told, the one thing that we, but that I hope we don't have every single year, although we might have, you know, some in, in future years, is a bond issue, right? Anytime you're proposing long-term debt, that motivates people to come out and vote. And so, yeah, I, I included the notes in here, you know, we had 28% in 2023, which was still good, 24% in 2022, only 13% in 2021. And so 40% is just. Right. And there wasn't a lot on the ballot that year, you know, in, in 2020.
Did hear some complaints about the line.
Yeah. So, and we should talk about that. I proposed later on that we maybe get together. We have, we are going to need to add a meeting on the 29th of April for RSA 4114A, kind of like scheduling. And I propose that maybe we could do like a strategic planning session for the balance of that meeting, kind of to look at what we did and start looking at what we're going to do. And I think a part of that conversation needs to be the length of the warrant, the details, because there's a lot of competing factors. Like, there's a lot going on in town. We can't ignore things. We have to be making these decisions, but there is voter fatigue. And, and I heard stories of people coming in, seeing that there are 44 questions in the line and leaving. And you never want to see that. So let's brainstorm that more. We don't need to dissect it.
And you, you did a really great job getting it out there online and taking the verbiage and breaking it down into the, you know, kind of layman's terms and how it will affect and really good job.
I appreciate that. We've had a ton of positive feedback about the voter guide, which obviously a group effort. But, and so all of these things feed in, but, but 40%.
So I have a question about the Planning Board zoning ordinances. This was an exceptionally large number.
Yes.
So if you could compare to other years.
We had five last year.
Five.
We had one or two. It is a big jump and, you know, in a perfect world, you would consolidate, you know, kind of sweeping zoning amendments to like every three or five years. But again, with so much development happening and you know, sitting on the Planning Board, you want to be responsive to the things that happen that, that are inconsistent with what people, people collective being residents in Barrington want to see happen. And so, yeah, I, I don't know if there's likely to be as many zoning amendments this upcoming year.
And the lawyer, when she reviewed those, did combine a couple of them? So we actually started out with more?
Wow.
So a couple of other notes. So, you know, there was a lot of conversation at this level, at the Budget Committee level and within the community about the financial impact of what was being proposed. And as it should be, you know, we stood at, on January 23rd at the primary election and we talked to anybody that would listen about, this is the financial impact of the decisions that we're going to ask you to make in March because we wanted to be open and transparent about that. But even with all that conversation, 61% of voters voted in support of the operating budget, which was tremendous. 62% for, to approve the library. The Tax Increment Financing received 55%, and then all the rest of the articles that passed received between 60 and 78% voter support, which we'll talk more about in Justice Act. And so I think, you know, a lot can be said by those results. Obviously, the more people that show up, the more reflective it is of the community. And I think the, the amount of support that we receive is a reflection on the work that the Select Board's doing, but more importantly, the work that the staff's doing providing services to residents. And that's a really important feedback loop that we're a part of. And I, I think it's also important to recognize that, you know, take the operating budget. 61% of people supported the operating budget and 39% of people didn't. And the, we have a responsibility to provide services to all residents of the town of Barrington and be responsive and thoughtful about all perspectives, not just the people that voted yes. And so, you know, be, be listening to residents that come to you with concerns. Hey, I didn't vote for this because X, Y, or Z. And we need to take that feedback into the next cycle so that we don't, you know, I don't want to say don't alienate, but, but we're a customer services organization and we provide services to all residents.
We don't just represent the people who agree with us is really what we need to be saying.
Precisely. And I, and I don't think that we do that, but I also think it bears reminding. Okay, so Public Safety Building. A surprising result from my perspective, if you asked me if that one article was going to fail and asked me which one it was, I, that would have been very low on the list.
Same here.
Variety of reasons. And 46% approval. So I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't far off, but here's the problem. I quoted it in here. It's RSA 32:10, paragraph I, little e. And this is colloquially known as the "no means no" provision of municipal budgeting, where if you have a separate warrant article and voters defeat it, you can't spend a penny on that purpose in that year. So the Select Board has the authority to move budget money around and meet, and, you know, changing priorities in a community. And so this prevents you from doing that if there are separate warrant articles that failed. And that's, that is a tough outcome for this because, you know, obviously we wanted to do the design so that we could present voters with a fully designed project in March of 2025 for a bond. And we can't spend a penny on a rendering, on a space need.
And this is immediate.
This is effective now. Yep. So, again, we, we don't need to figure out what to do now. I think we need to start that conversation shortly. But that's a tough outcome to, to experience.
You know, I think we could probably use the ARPA funds for it, which, well, not for this year.
Oh, in the future.
But it has to be, hey, you know, have a plan for it.
Yep. Well, in '25, we could use it to prepare for '26.
In '25, could we use it in January or March?
So I have this question out to the New Hampshire Municipal Association. It's a busy time of year, so I'm not surprised that the, their legal services haven't responded. So the, the language of the statute says in that year. Now, we're talking about budget appropriation, so it's seen reasonable that they're talking about the fiscal year, which is January to December, which means that maybe you could spend money in January, but it seems a little bit disingenuous. But also, it's tough to spend money in January on designing something that you need residents to vote on in March, right? Our public hearing was January 8th this year. So I think either way, it doesn't help us, but a good question.
When's it deadline to appropriate the ARPA funds? Because that's.
By the end of this year, they need to be committed and spent by the end of 2026.
So we can't even make a motion to commit those funds?
No.
Okay.
Nope. So, yeah, be thinking about that also. Maybe more conversation on the 29th, but I, I want to get that out there, part of the conversation now because what we can't do is ignore that facility and the, the needs that we have now and that we're going to have as we continue to evolve. So, yeah, certainly wasn't all sunshine and rainbows. That was the biggest hit.
And I would just be curious that if anyone hears just why people were opposed to it.
Yeah, very odd. The Sally Point, the Sally Port that is needed. Do we have like a pie in the sky estimate of what the police would need in order to have that built?
Oh, just doing a Sally Port?
Yes.
I don't think those numbers have been crunched.
Okay. Okay.
Is that information the Select Board would like? I don't, I don't even, I don't know. I think our hands are really tied for.
Without the design, I'm thinking of, okay.
Okay, so next. And, and this is, it's really only scratched the surface, but I wanted, I was so interested in the results that I wanted to do some analysis early on to start to try to understand these things. So you have, it's titled 2024 Warrant Article Tax Rate Impact Analysis. And for those of you that have, have been around this, I did this for the first time last year. And the real goal of doing it last year was to evaluate the impact of having each warrant article listed with a tax rate impact on voter support. And so all of the background you're familiar with, but it's there if you want to read it. What we did prior to 2023, what we did in 2023, and then of course, what we did in 2024, which was split funding, half from the tax rate, half from unassigned fund balance. And I'll just give you the highlights here, but obviously you've had this, you can read it or reference it later. Average voter support per funding source, okay? So when we funded these warrant articles from unassigned fund balance, 2019 to 2022, the articles received an average of 77% support.
Wow.
In 2023, when they were all listed with a tax rate impact, even though we said we'd use unassigned fund balance to provide on tax rate, which we did, voter support was an average of 61%. This year, where we proposed a split, it still listed a tax rate impact for each warrant article, but it also listed unassigned fund balance as a funding source, the average voter support was 66%. And so I don't think a lot can be concluded from that, but it's interesting to see how, on a zoomed-out analysis, what this does. On the next page, you see a bar graph. And so what this shows is the difference in voter support by warrant article between '23 and '24. And so if you look all the way to the right, Library Technology, the fact that we listed for that Library Technology article, that 1,500 was going to come from unassigned fund balance and 1,500 from the tax rate, instead of all from the tax rate, increased voter support for that by almost 7%, which is kind of a surprising outcome. On the left side, you see those articles that it had less of an effect on. Actually, fewer people voted for the Police Equipment Capital Reserve this year than they did last year, which not a lot fewer, but 1% fewer. Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve, again, that was kind of less affected by having unassigned fund balance funding. So that's how you read this bar chart. The green bar there is the operating budget. Obviously, none of that was funded from unassigned fund balance, but I think it's interesting to see that the operating budget this year received almost 3% more voter approval than it did last year. And then the last bar chart on page four, this shows 2024 compared to 2019 to 2022, when, when items were funded from the unassigned fund balance. And I should have probably done this as a negative to illustrate it, but these percentages are how much less support was, was received in 2024 compared to 2019, 2022. So about 7% less support for the operating budget in '24 compared to the average of 2019 to 2022. And then again, you can see which articles received more, less support. The biggest, the greatest reduction in support, dam repair, transfer station, bridge and culvert, and then fire rescue equipment, pretty unaffected, only 5% different. So obviously, we don't know yet what unassigned fund balance will look like ahead of the 2025 warrant cycle. But we'll revisit these numbers at that point.
Just a chair.
Basically.
So the $75,000 that was going to go towards wasn't.
Correct.
So is that $75,000 now being diluted evenly to all of the other approved?
Excellent question. Not automatically.
Okay.
But what I expect to do, based on previous conversations with this board, is at tax rate setting this year, just like tax rate setting last year, we look at that amount available above the 12.5% midpoint of the range, after everything that was approved, and we assign a number to buy down the tax rate of an equal amount. And so the, what we talked about, if an article failed, is that the Select Board would take that $75,000 and use it to buy down the taxes, essentially distributing that additional impact among all of the articles, but at tax rate setting.
Have you shared this with the ABC?
Not yet.
I think they'll, they'll be interested and I, I still think that the way we did it this year with the 50/50 is the most transparent and fair of, of the other two were the opposite extremes, I think.
And, you know, this year, it worked out that we had unassigned fund balance. I call it surplus unassigned fund balance, but that's kind of redundant. But unassigned fund balance above 12.5%. It just so happened that it worked out it was about 50% of all the warrant articles that were being proposed. In 2025, maybe the number is 33% or 40% or 20%. But I think that way of taking the amount of money that, that we have to contribute towards capital investments and distributing it evenly among all articles in a proportional way seemed to resonate with people. I agree. Thanks for the feedback.
Puts the voters back in control of their money.
Yep.
Okay, that's the brief after-action of town meeting, but obviously we'll be talking about it a lot more. Onto probably the second most exciting thing after 40% voter turnout. The fact that we had 424 kids vote and Barrington kids vote. I met with the superintendent this morning and she shared with me that that is like half of the population of the K-8 in Barrington. So that's like 50% voter turnout of K-8. And I haven't looked at the numbers, but we didn't have many high schoolers' votes. Most of these were from.
Less than 10.
It wasn't a lot. So very importantly, by a vast majority of votes, Barrington will be trick-or-treating on Halloween in 2024. The Boston Globe pointed out today that how we always used to do things, October 30th, got the least number of votes. So I think the, the people have, have now spoken.
Well, it's a trick-or-treater sound, but we better listen.
Right? Now we can step back. Oh, and I, I want to reiterate something we decided when the Select Board delegated that authority. This is a rain or shine event. Trick-or-treating is on the 31st, rain or shine, period. That is, the Select Board isn't going to have an emergency meeting to change anything. The kids have spoken. It's the 31st. If it's bad weather, get out there, go to another community another day. Trick-or-treating's on the 31st.
You know what? We went through a trick-or-trunk, right? You were there.
I was there. It was.
I have never been so soggy in my entire life and torrentially down.
Right? Smokey Barrington is the name of our new forestry truck, which is just a fantastic name, influenced heavily by our fire chief who harassed every child that visited the polls, that they better name it Smokey Barrington or.
It was the late Gross election year.
It was Gross. Gross is right.
Good thing he's retiring.
And then some fantastic sticker designs, which we'll print for next year. And I'll, I'll mention that the ECLC principal is having the four sticker designers from that zero to kindergarten category. They're all students at the ECLC. And they'll be at the school board meeting tomorrow reciting the pledge, which is, which is really special. Okay, so Barrington Kids Vote. I included in here the sticker design winners and then the banner, which will be, once we get it laminated, will be hung up in, in the town hall here.
Are there any other towns doing kids?
Not yet. Not yet.
New Hampshire Civics.
Did we need a Boston Globe today?
Yeah.
Really?
It was actually a great article. So I mentioned to him when we spoke how it was Jack Gale who referenced a town in Vermont that, that elected a goat as mayor. And, and then so that was kind of the seed for this whole idea.
Yeah.
And so the, the reporter, there, there are reporters that do journalism still, and he found the town in Vermont in 2019 that elected a goat as mayor. And so it's linked in his article. I can send you a copy of it.
And I want to be holding. And it is very clear from the signatures from all the children that while we think Curse of is dead, they, they, some of them really did their amazing signatures there. Jacob, Tiffany, I assume it was you that was posting a warrant article a day on Facebook? Connor, you were doing that? I don't know where you guys got the time to load all that up, but it was really impactful. People appreciated it.
I, I, I think we did a lot of good work letting people know what they're voting on. I think it, it was difficult for somebody to say that they didn't have the opportunity to be informed.
Sure. It's a good model for municipalities across New Hampshire.
Okay, moving on quickly. Southeast Land Trust included some details in here. They conserved 158 acres of the Bedford family property and in three different tracts. But just exciting to see more land conserved in Barrington as open space.
Everybody saw the map.
What magazine is that in?
Oh, it's a self.
And so what percentage does that put us at for conserve land and water?
I can get you an update.
That'd be important. That's a really important. That's a really important statistic.
But look at how they colored in discussion. That was another big track.
I think that's all Bedford property, so. Okay, Select Board Committee assignments. So as requested, and I emailed this out early on, but the, um, the when the different committees meet, so Jim Sikosha, your duties between now and the next meeting on April 8th is going to be making these assignments, so they can jockey you as appropriate. And, um, you, you and I can get together, I'll put the final list in TA report for everybody.
Does anybody, do we want to talk about it now? Could probably be pretty quick.
Yeah, I mean, do you guys want to vary or another interest? Are you guys good with the committees you're on now?
I'm happy with planning board.
I'm happy with zoning.
I'd soon stay on the school board and stuff.
But we will keep it a.
And you'll keep technology.
Who's on REC?
Yep.
I think that.
Transfer station? Okay. Technology Advisory Budget Committee? Okay. School Board. Library.
We should be wrapping up housing.
Okay. Trails.
Conservation.
Yep.
Energy. Town lands and library building.
Ooh, library building, right?
Gotta wrap up.
Definitely. That's gonna be, that's gonna be.
That's exciting.
Big responsibility. Okay, awesome. So I'll get that in my list and you're free and clear. Okay, training opportunities, local official workshop, another plug, if you're available, virtual or in person, it's great, even if you've been around the block, um, you always pick up something new, April 3rd and May 7th, they have those sessions. Let me know if you need help registering, if you're interested. And then the NHMA contra, conference is on the 30th and 31st, um, this year.
MOA Cottle?
For signature, we have three oats of office approved on the consent agenda and then the Community Power Coalition Cost Sharing Agreement. Cost sharing agreement is, um, a wet signature need, so if you can do that before you leave, I'd appreciate it.
There are three signatures on that. Three places? Two places?
At least two.
Okay. Old business, uh, we have none, new business. The meeting on the April 29th for the MAP 239 lot seven RSA 4114A process discussion. On March, the voters approved Article 24 to establish the tax increment financing district and purchase MAP 23 lot seven, and Select Board uses the RSA 1414A to acquire the property interest. I would like to propose that we use this opportunity to have, or on the April 29th meeting, to have a strategic planning session on the land purchase and get together. What do you guys think about that?
Dates, double check. Monday, 29th, April 29th.
I'm not going to be in town on the 29th.
Okay.
I probably can remotely.
Or if you have any suggestions prior to, just email them over before.
So we don't have to have a strategic planning session then. Uh, we do need to meet as long as a quorum is available to take the final decision on the 4114A process. It has to happen between seven and 10 days after the second hearing. And so we're just kind of handicapped by that schedule.
So we're meeting on the 29th. 4/29.
Yes.
Okay. So the question is, is it for five minutes or is it a strategic plan?
Precisely.
Um, I'm comfortable, Dan, and are you comfortable with us jumping into some type of strategic session or do you want us to wait?
I think it's hard to do it remotely.
Well, that, yeah, I'd like to be part of that.
Okay.
If we can do it remotely, then.
Let, let's pick another date. Yeah, it's going to be a lot to cover and it could be earlier than that. I just, it was a, it made sense because we needed to add that meeting anyways. But we did, we even did a Tuesday strategic planning session in the last cycle. So, um.
Any day in particular work better for people besides the Mondays?
Tuesdays and Thursdays are hard for me unless they're later in the evening, like I can do a seven o'clock easily.
Oh, how about a Wednesday?
Good with any.
But Wednesday, the 24th of.
Let me make sure that's zoning.
Could be the Wednesday before that even.
17? That is zoning, so the 17th is a Wednesday.
Oh, that's the third Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
What about, um, could do, well, we could do Monday, the 15th, that would be three Mondays in a row.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that would actually be four Mondays in a row.
But then would we not need to do the 29th?
No, we still would.
We still would, it has to be.
Yeah, tho, the, the 8th, 22nd and 29th, those are it.
29th may not be.
We could go into May, I mean, I don't, um.
Let's hit that bar while we can.
Say that again?
Hit this bar while we can.
The 15th.
We can't do it on the 15th because you have to have 10 days from the 7th.
Worth doubling up, do we have a short Select Board meeting such that we could have an hour, just half hour, hour after?
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying. We commit, we could commit April 8th to no more than half hour of business and then strategic planning, followed by strategic planning?
That sounds good.
That's a good suggestion. Yeah, I mean, this is a relatively quiet, um, time of year anyways, so yeah, okay. So we'll plan, do you still want to start at 6:30? We could start earlier.
Either way is fine with me.
I'm fine either way. Okay. Guys want to do 5:30?
Sure. Okay.
5:30?
It's just to remember.
Do you want to, um, do you want to do strategic planning first? Or do you want to have the regular meeting start at 5:30?
Regular meeting.
I have a regular meeting with start under a minute. Then we can.
Yeah, then we can have. They'll be watching our watch.
So 5, 5:30 to 6 is regular meeting and are you concerned? Cause we always meet at 6:30.
Is that going to be for the public?
Well, I mean, we, we have the ability to do it.
It, it doesn't matter to me, it's just, you know, if sometimes, sometimes we get pretty creative, so you know.
Yeah, let's highlight the time in red and indicate to the public that it's an anomaly, that, that 5:30 start.
And yeah, we'll try not to have much business, um, at that session. Perfect. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Onto permit work on Winkley Pond Road. The Planning Board conditionally approved a project for Hambone LLC on MAP 2, uh, 253 lot 14 for six multifamily units. You guys had a chance to look at this?
Part of the driveway construction includes excavating and, um, fixing, you know, addressing drainage concerns in the town's right of way. It's a town road, they need our permission. As recommended by the Planning Board, that work would be bonded. Um, they would post basically insurance, um, that would provide funding if they didn't leave the site stabilized or if they went bankrupt halfway through. And, uh, that portion of the project would be overseen by the town's third party engineer at the, um, developer's expense.
And the Planning Board is requiring this in order for them to proceed?
Correct.
Okay.
And this was a proposal that did get scaled down, um, during the planning board process.
Okay.
Different from the proposal before that had?
First proposal was for a seven unit. So it'll be, uh, some units here.
Two and four.
Two and. And then what? duplex and then.
Who oversees to be sure that they've pulled the insurance and all of that?
The town planner.
Okay. So I would make a motion to authorize work within the right of way of Winkley Pond Road consistent with the conditionally approved plans and conditions set by the Planning Board, including a bond and third party inspections by the town's contract engineer, so that, um, the owner can proceed with MAP 253 lot 14, six multifamily units.
Second? Roll call.
Record cut high.
Copy yellow eye.
Sikosha. Want to select member, Select Board member reports and concerns?
So we had the master plan housing committee meeting and really excellent, um, input from a variety of perspectives. And I think the 29th of March, we should have a proposed draft, um, to move forward with as far as the, I want to say the narrative that will go out in reference to that. Zoning Board, we did not have, did we have, yeah, we did not have a meeting last month.
Conservation and energy both met, um, something that, um, Tracy, you brought up at the last meeting about the solar and getting input from both, and there is overlap, um, both committees, um, however, I did bring it up with both of them.
Yes.
And, um, what we've decided on is to put together some sort of a solar strategic plan, um, where all groups can weigh in the pros and cons and.
Love it.
Uh, conservation also looked at, it's up here, uh, discussed the Bedford parcels, um, which was mentioned earlier. They will be, um, providing a, a letter of support for the TIF district, which is, I guess a formality that, that needs to happen from Conservation Commission. The Richardson Pond Ecological Study, um, uh, proposal's been, um, given its, or, or, um, submitted, it's, uh, under $15,000 and that will come before us to, um, look at getting that done. And there was more discussion about the Young Road project, they'll be sending, uh, their, their, uh, input to the Planning Board. That's it.
The only transfer station committee has done some preliminary work about stickers and we're probably will address that at our next meeting. School Board and Library Board. Shuffle those, shuffle those.
I guess you're next on the agenda.
One, one more thing, and I think you've seen the, the, uh, things from Boris about the ABC. They are proposing that ABC start doing some strategic planning here and waiting for the budget.
We should talk about that on the 8th.
Yeah, I have a question about, about when we nominate individuals, someone approach.
Direct them to the application for appointment, which is barrington.nh.gov forward slash application for appointment.
Right. So they should do it now.
I think, no, I think it is. But yes.
No, they don't meet for a while.
They can submit that, um, and we should decide probably on the 8th, the process that we want to go through for pulling that committee together. So, but anybody that's interested, I already have some applications also. There was a brief period in November, December, where we were thinking we might form the committee early as like an advisory committee, um, but there wasn't enough interest to pull the whole group together. So, um, yeah, the more people that throw their hat in the ring, the better selection process we can have.
Nothing new going on at the REC. I checked in with, uh, Jesse today and I'm, I'm fresh off, uh, vacation, so I haven't had the chance to catch up.
Planning Board, I think the, what was probably of most interest to the public at Planning Board is we spent, um, again, a long time, um, discussing, uh, the Young Road, um, proposal. Both sides, both the town attorney was there and their attorney, which I thought from my perspective led to a really productive conversation. Our town attorney urged us to, any concerns we had to get them out so that they were all on the, um, table and the others I could address them. So, uh, hopefully they'll be able to attend to all of those by our, um, early April meeting, but that might be a tight deadline. We'll see.
Excellent. At this time, I'm going to, uh, open up the second public comment. If there's anybody in the audience or online that would like to join. Let's hear about those pancakes.
I heard it was well attended.
Yeah, so I just wanted to again, thank you folks, uh, for allowing the Fireman's Association to use the public safety building. We put our, uh, first customer was sitting in the parking lot at quarter or seven, about 20 past seven, we went out and got him and said, come on in and eat. And, uh, it got busy about 7:30 and it stayed busy until 10:30. We were, at one point, um, we went through, uh, two buckets of pancake mix in 18 minutes. And, uh, people, people had a good time and, uh, we had a good time doing it. So again, thank you for allowing us to, uh, host that event. It's good for the town, good for the fire department. I also is, uh, I guess effective tomorrow night, be an elected school board member, so I look forward to, uh, working, uh, the two boards working together for the benefit of the town of Barrington.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Breakfast, we need the roof leaking above the tables, you know?
The power going out.
The drip, drip of, uh, leaky roof.
But haven't before the election.
Yeah.
I don't see anybody online.
I just, um, what, what steps are we taking in reference to the air quality study again?
Yes, the, reached out to Stratford Regional Planning, um, for framework and have reached out to the consultants that did the analysis for recommendations on how to proceed with the, um, study that was done.
Thank you.
Okay, nobody else online or in person? I'm going to close public comment. We have no need for non-public. I'm ready now.
Second.
Roll call.
Record cut high.
Gibson eye.
Church eye.
Copy yellow eye.
Sikosha.